Recording in progress. Welcome all of you to the San Luis County Board of County Commissioners, ready your reading. Today's Tuesday, August 20, 2024. It is 9:00 AM. We're coming this meeting tour. Please rise for an invocation by Commissioner Conchas, followed by Commissioner Polis, by Commissioner Luis Lopez. Thank you, Lord, for listening. Thank you for keeping alive and doing all the speeches again. Guide support, anyways, making us straighten our steps and point your way. He's gonna strengthen you through all of the challenges that they bring. We overcome everything with your guidance, obviously, if we're not able to do it. And the life of the citizens to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just, I want to add. Did we have a flag for the audience?
No.
Yes.
Oh.
No, for us, we have the flags up there, so whatever makes the audience comfortable, I think, for being here. Commissioner, before that, roll call, Mr. Dorikam.
Mr. Hesse.
Here. Commissioner Beasley.
Here.
Commissioner Beasley.
Here.
I'm going over the agenda. Do you have any changes to the agenda, Mr. Dorikam?
No changes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Understood motion.
Second motion.
Commissioner Beasley.
Yes.
Commissioner Hesse.
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley. Yes, once again, welcome to all of you. We're gonna go into section two, consideration minutes. Regular, you know, interments. Thank you, sir. Let's go to section three, reading of correspondence. Commissioner Hesse, you'd like to go first?
Sure. On August 7th, I attended the Colorado Board Strategy Committee. The meeting was to update committee members on outreach, meeting responses, and to provide feedback. We also reviewed conclusions of the final draft for the cooperative Colorado partnerships. And they intend to unveil the revised draft plan and the envision of chafing for next Colorado. It's held in July on September 25th. On August 8th, the Garden Animal Impact Assistance Fund Committee had this was the update and training for all the eleven local members of the board, new and returning of all fourteen regional managers and assistants. We're present with updates from their regions. We reviewed the correct distribution factors based on oil and gas extraction. This factor is calculated based on employee count and active mineral extraction areas. For example, Los Angeles County has 245 active employees at the time that this data was collected. We also reviewed challenges that were submitted for each local government. Five hundred ninety-five challenges for Los Angeles County, seventeen of them were sufficient. Challenges related to addresses of employees. So the address submitted by the employee has to be current. The total count for employees in Colorado is now eight thousand one hundred thirty-five. On August 9th, Colorado Health Control Unit, where we're recording the budget meeting, and it did the final review, the total assets is seventeen million two hundred nineteen thousand. San Luis County is currently as a rate down two. And they, they, for this, it was lost, rated at nine point eight percent by 2025. And we believe that San Luis County will probably go up to rate down next year. On August 9th, Colorado Outdoor Partnership, I got a call from Judy Kennedy. She's the director for Colorado Outdoor Partnership. And she asked if I would fill the vacancy that they had on the executive board with the exit, one of the exits. As you guys remember, out of maybe eighteen months ago, I attended a Zoom. And it talked about agro tourism, the hospital and agro tourism in Southern Colorado. And not long ago, I represented on, on the call at that time, and I related that message. And as of now, as of yesterday, the number of stores, we have four exits. Eric Lynn from Colorado Townes Land Trust, who's conservation easement coordinator, he's on. Because they had made a statement that when I told them that ninety percent of the lands in the southern Colorado are private lands, a gentleman from the nature consultancy told me that you realize that forty percent of those lands are in some form of conservation easement? And that set up great flags for me, and that they were gonna use this as an avenue on the private property. So I called Eric Lynn from Colorado Townes Land Trust, and I said, you realize this spot? He said, no. I said, we need your help. He got a position on the executive board. John Flankin from CCI got a position down there for local government. I got a local government seat and an exit, it's a combined seat. Beverly Gray from Motha County got another exit. She's a county producer, has twenty-plus years on the state land board, has the director of the state land board, which is huge. And also Eric Harvey from Colorado County District. So we finally got some ag representation, although they're gonna introduce this draft plan in November. And I hope it's not too late, because I wish that Ag would have more input while this was going on. On the 12th of August, all of the commissioners attended a CDOG meeting. We went up to the proposed tunnel that would be going under, wildlife tunnel would be going under I-25. This has about a mile and a half, one and a half miles down through the pass. And I think it was last, I, anyway, he was the gentleman from CDOG that gave us the tour. And he showed us approximately where the wildlife tunnel would be constructed, and then the rationale behind the bill. Raton Pass, from Raton all the way up to the pass, headed north, they've got the wildlife fencing up there. It stops at the state line. So what that does is channels all the wildlife, but try and get to the west side of the highway to that area. And because of that, there has been a significant increase in car handling collisions, wildlife collisions, right there in the state line. So by extending the fence on and down a mile and a half on Colorado's side, and then putting the tunnel under there, the wildlife tunnel is huge. Hopefully, it won't create that problem. I think the rationale makes sense to me, so we'll be talking about that soon. On the 13th of August, Action Colorado Board received an update from our lobbyist, Michael Beasley. The discussion on a special session regarding the deal that Governor Polis and Michael Fields are trying to make regarding the future of 233, 50, and 108 to the compromise. And then we found out that Weisman and Hansman have a ballot initiative proposal called Initiative 95. And we got a, we got a request from Weisman to sign a letter of support for this ballot initiative. And Action Colorado said, no, we're not doing that, we're not doing business, this is bad evidence. We'll just anyway, out of session, anyway, we're gonna close that, we're gonna move ahead with and support the compromise that Governor Polis is trying to make with it. On August 15th, CCI met for their budget and ex hoc meeting. CCI has a clean opinion, but no findings, and a very healthy financial position. On the 16th, Colorado Technical Services Institute, CTSI, the CCI, have their budget and ex hoc meeting. The same, has a clean opinion, but no findings, a very healthy financial position. On August 16th, I attended my first Colorado Outdoor Partnership board meeting on the executive team. CPW did their habitat update, and Jackie Millicent had twenty-five meetings up till now. And case including the CPW habitat, habitat areas that were identified are the working intent, we're trying to define where the, where the, the corridors are going to be on the gas along, and the working intent was there, which is a little concerning. But anyway, they, their objective was to identify wildlife species and where those corridors are. They're open, they're warm, sheep, and a lot of grouse, plains, and very chicken. And they, they have just about done that, they're gonna, they're gonna go out there, wildlife action plan in, at the meeting, what they have on some things. The only director, Bill Sack, was there. And I asked him, I said, with all of the plans and processes that are going forward, I haven't heard you once talk about the grazing allowance that are up on the hill there. Is grazing gonna be allowed? Is that even part of the plan or the process? And he told me, be assured, everybody in the audience, that grazing would still be allowed. And that the only place that there may be some restrictions will be near Edgason or the safe grouse. And that's my report, sir. Thank you, sir. Basically, it's Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you, and just a true testament, Commissioner Hesse, to this board, and we've taken on two more laws, two more organizations. Thank you for accepting those, representing Los Angeles County, this particular board commissioner. There's only a law between the three of us, the ones fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, laws apiece. To our own board at that time, just not because it's, we don't see that very many counties, we all work with a lot of counties. This part really goes out for a whole new time. On the eighth, Chairman, I had a meeting with Chairman Renewal Board. A good meeting that we've been hearing in the reports regarding the Opera House, the Joppa Opera House, and the consideration of the loan, which been Chairman Renewal Board, and the developer in property. I have been constantly asking for requests regarding the process before we engage in this matter. That process was able to come forward, and I feel a lot more comfortable if we were to engage with the loan. My biggest concern was, of course, engaging or competing with the private sector banks. And my main concern was make sure they have a succession plan to move forward with this, including the entire renovations of the loan project. So we have that in place, we have a presentation from Mrs. Crawford's successor and her developer's assistant, along with her home licenses and the architect. And the first phase is we'll be able to drive the roof throughout the dragons and secure the upper corner, frame out, insulation, which supports masonry, and all of the sidewalks that is now abandoned. That is the first phase of this. The phase two, the interior consolidation at the main level, getting those viable and open for rental properties and businesses, so they can go for the next phase of rent. So they have a plan in place, and they indicated that identified specific grants that they were willing to be going after. At this point, we are now in negotiations with the chairman and the member director, Pat Howlett, of the Renewal Board, to negotiate that contract. I asked him to make sure that we vet that process properly, as we would as a middle bank, including financial disclosures. We keep, we keep private, of course, but to make sure that the repayment of the loan can work out easily. So that will be under consideration, I'm assuming, for the next quarter. We are still looking for any to facilitate all the paperwork and processes going forward this time. We got what security is out of this, to see the long-term result of what we'll make, but that was my biggest concern. Just put banding on it for the next two, three years, until it counts on the road in a different time. So they presented that, so very happy with that. And then we went on with the regular, there wasn't much other than they, they business. On the 13th, we have a work session here, the Northern Quarter, regarding our voting coming up. And we recall those issues for the community and for the board's office. We thank our veteran service officer for stepping up to the flight, allowing use of his office space. So thank you very much for being so, and the clerk, and the committee satisfied with the board, and the compliance and state statute, for the voting for the board's office, we assure the board. On the same day, I attended the city council meeting, and I was very upset with the way their work session went that day. There was a, I was requested and asked to be there by a council member to discuss the homeless issues from the county minister's perspective. Because we do represent the city of Trinidad as well, our district's chief governor of the city. And no one was called upon to speak at this work session. They're actually on a table, the guy had a first, until one of the councilmembers spoke up and said, there's a report being here. I don't know if we're calling the city council, or if the work session's unlike what we do ours here. It's pretty much a very relaxed format. We invite people to come and speak to us regarding various issues and concerns on the topic that is on the agenda. Unfortunately, the city of Trinidad doesn't allow to do that, the work session, and I really wasted a couple hours of time being there. I was invited to come back tonight to speak, and I haven't thoroughly dropped that through for a premium public comment. I'm gonna try to get all out of the room as properly as I can. There was a discussion regarding conversation of the homeless issue, the detective legs that we invite to county, we haven't seen them. We haven't been invited since last October, but we just recently received an email regarding the quote, " maintain at eight o'clock." So there was some other concerns brought up by the chief of police, interim chief of police, regarding why they do not prosecute and jail any of their violators of their civil organizations. Although there's not a contract in place with the county jail, and that would then be fixed. We do have those contracts with other counties throughout our region, or sheriff have a right to accommodate other needs from other communities. And I think it's just that the cities never moved forward with that, and they should have a facility in place where they can prosecute their municipal violators and these people. So very disappointed in how that process went. I had the city council work session a long time ago, this was a request and an invite from another council member to go speak, and we're going to go speak. Very unfortunate. People wanted to recognize we're in a group, and Northern Quarter, Perry Apple was present as well, and another deputy here for the city, Perry Exel. On the 15th, Front Range Rail, passing through our executive meeting. And we are moving forward with grant processes, and how we're going to start the fund rating for our ballot for 2026 for the Front Range Rail. There's a lot of activity coming up for the rail, we will have on retreat on October in Denver, and we have a working coming up in the next variety. To discuss other issues that the executive committee would like to express to the entire board. I think we're finalizing, hopefully getting finalized with CDOG, the surface development plan for the core work. I know the identification of the stations has been completed. We're moving forward with all of the major studies that go along with it. A lot of moving parts, there's also negotiations going on with the seven bills that pass for transportation this year. The two bills, and then how that's gonna be dispersed, we still don't have a hundred percent transparency yet of how that will be allocated between CDOG, Front Range Rail, and RTD. RTD still has to, or has to meet to convene regarding the hundred million dollars that they have painful loss of the share and assistance from the governor, Paul Collins, Segway, over the rail, and those are still ongoing conversations and negotiations at this time. The rail, ENSF, and Union Circuit are also still capable of this with contract. And we're just basically waiting for the certain development plan to be disclosed and available to us at the chest. Herman Stockton, with CDOG, has been appointed to, to the board for each rail, maybe replacing John Pummett. This is CDOG appointed, and John Pummett is now a veteran appointed. And so Herman Stockton, Herman Stockton has been with CDOG for many years, through many administrations. He's gonna add value, huge value of insight, for the knowledge of everything that he's done with transit for twenty-five years of rail this time. So a law firm, I have reached out to him, he reached out to me, asked yesterday an email, to get to the others, we didn't visit. Regarding some concerns that are very depressing right now for Los Angeles County and its two other regions, and the front range. So Elijah Ford, they have that conversation, and the law firm, through the front range for passing for rail. The 16th, the head of the council of governments, director, and a couple of board members. We have the meaningful consultants regarding, they are the actual lobbyists that are working first with the wheel, that would try to move for the CPR of the boundaries. They also are available to us for possible grant varieties, and a lot of the services we got, Southern Colorado. So we're gonna be looking at some more presentations regarding, this was the initial presentation, regarding costs and expenditures to acquire their services. I have been an advocate for the grant rider, perhaps the governance, for eight years now. Unfortunately, with the COVID and everything that hit, wasn't the channel for us to report, and the management wasn't available to us. In this capacity, it might be something that if we can finance it properly and share expenses, and maybe share use in the communities between the cities and counties, as well of the rent, rider, the airways, all of those, through council buildings, it might be a win-win. So to pay for it is gonna be another issue, how do we get that done? I asked Mr. Blazey, council of governors, to look into the fees that they collected from the counties and cities and values. And he did that, he's gonna do a comparison for other parks throughout the region, throughout the state, and see if we are in pace with that fee assessment, whether you're contributing or not. According to our records, Congress has not had an increase since deception for South Central Council of Governments playing the cities or counties. And that's the instance that we're, eighty, seventy? So we haven't had the increase in all these, so we're gonna look into that, and maybe possibly come and ask for requests for more funding, not offset this expenditure, and possibly have an available rent rider available to all municipalities and county governments in the region. And yes, we're going, I met with material partners, we're going. We have, we developed a loan, and I look to finance it because it's an old loan. They're just taking mom off the loan, and the son's taking loan for electric company in, in Miami. And the balance is a twenty-nine thousand dollars, which is very small, but you have a hundred thousand on line credit. They're at zero debt at this time, so there's no way to assist with that, and get that transfer over with no origination fees. Since they are such a good borrower, and they're relying to pay their on their debt, and moving forward with that. And that's, one last thing, remind everybody that it is local, our local farmers and producers, the police shop local. I know the farms out in homing and surrounding areas, including our ranchers and our hay producers are in full harvest right now. There's a support then, and make sure that we give them a lot of business local as much as possible. And my favorite type of the year is coming in now, the chili season, the scarril, and keep your body mobile if you can. And I got called by local producers, local farmers, and our local businessmen, and that's very important.
Thank you, sir. There's always stuff that's good, great, children, right? My report, on August the 19th, we met with the Colorado Board for our meeting. On that executive board, one of the things that we continue to see is that the number of cases throughout Colorado that were serving on the children's side of the house for the DHS increased tremendously from COVID to date. So we're looking for, obviously, for the state to step up and help counties cover those expenses. There is a very, it was a very, a three-hour meeting, a very in-depth about funding and numbers and so on. And it gets a bit challenging and frustrating because it all comes down to money. Counties that went through the COVID perspective, they came to DHS, and some of them have not been able to fund the funding. So that's making, that's making it a bit challenging for counties throughout the entire state with the increase of numbers. The, we had opportunity to get the National Association of Counties, NAPO, page, had a presentation with the San Luis County. It was actually really good, we'll provide that information to you, Mr. Dorikam. Accepted the assistant of Lucero Shaw and Finance Director, probably, and I attended that meeting. Basically, what NAPO has is a way of services, three thousand sixty-nine counties working together throughout the United States. We are actually participating, members of NAPO, on procurement, on some of the other personal benefits, insurances, and so on, retirement services. So this is a really broad one-hour seminar, I think there was a lot of information there. I asked them to send us the slides of all the information they provided. We need to have now a work session, see if any of those could be up to the San Luis County, and how we could participate and save up the dollars. You know, one of the, one of the most important points is they have now, they're managing billions of dollars to build procurement from all the counties nationwide, so it's kind of the economics of scale. But our, we'll follow up on that. The, one of the most important meetings I wanted to mention is, we had a meeting with CDA last Thursday, Colorado Department of Agriculture, and we continue to see this from the Department of Ag, Food Administration, Center for Disease Control, warnings on dairy cattle. There is a high pathogenic avian influenza in dairy cows. And one of the things that we asked the CDA director, how are we to monitor that information? How are we helping farmers and ranchers in the most needed areas? It's through information, so all of the Colorado Department of Ag website, one thing that the impact has been on the northern part of the state. But one of the, one of the most kind of challenging ones, the early cats that are going into the dairy farms are now getting infected. There has been, I believe, two human cases with very little, very little symptoms. Nonetheless, this influenza is out there, so anybody that has cattle, keep an eye on that, and keep checking with the CDA, because it was quite, quite alarming, you know, to hear how Colorado has become the epicenter of this particular influenza.
If I may, Chairman, please advise to contact the local health department?
Yes.
So they can help track that issue as well, and the board of the CDA. We had that discussion on the board meeting, so it wasn't huge on the radar, but they are available.
Yeah, it is, and it is there, so just keep an eye on it, because certainly, who knows how this thing is gonna continue to evolve. The other topic of conversation on this particular meeting was the wolves, the introduction of the wolves. And I can tell you that the participants on this conference all were happy that apparently one of the tribes in the state of Washington or Oregon has declined the exportation, or the exportation from their state to this state of wolves. So from the participants on that, we told them there's not very, and we have, from the ranch community, go ahead and keep putting the rat if you will, because right now, the farmers and ranchers that are being impacted, especially happening on the northwest part of the counties, they're really being impacted by deportation. So that is, that is yet to be seen, and we also, there's gonna be a gathering at the State Fair in which CDA is gonna have a booth, if you happen to be at the State Fair. It's not my last questions about this pathogenic influenza on dairy cattle, what's happening with wolves, and so on. But we thought there were some other questions, what's gonna happen on the upcoming, next day's session? We're hearing that other predators might be reintroduced to Colorado. So that yet to be seen, keep an eye on what's coming up. And so that is, that was pretty, pretty interesting. The, one of the reminders is that on August 26th, this coming Monday, and I'm gonna be with the and I'm going to lead the, uh, the, the middle of the, uh, special session for Assessor Amara that's here with us this morning. The governor has called a special session in Colorado once again to address, uh, property taxes. We, uh, we understand where this is going. The agreement has already been done. The session has been called, so we need to keep an eye on what is happening. I saw yesterday, I have heard and confirmed that it's going to be a three day session. Three day session for such a heavy, heavy, uh, follow up on Senator Bill 24 to 33 could be a little bit challenging. We'll see what happens, but I know, I, uh, we had a conversation already, I had a conversation with Senator Kirkmire, went over a lot of the details, uh, which I think is going to be one of the sponsors of the bill. Also had a conversation with our representative Winter and Representative Reeves, who are the chair and the vice chair of the minority caucus. So they're well aware of what could be happening. We just wanted to, to put the sidebars on this particular piece of legislation. And in counties like ours, we cannot, at the end of the day, we have services to provide to our communities. They can't just shake off all the way to their bones because we have the fiduciary responsibility and the, uh, responsibility to provide from, uh, law enforcement, DHS and all the other services that we have, roads and so on. So stay tuned and we're hoping that the three days are going to be an enough opportunity for a testimony from more than anyone. Uh, my, my conversation with Senator Kirkmire is to keep the assessors at the front end of this particular piece of legislation because the assessment that's going to take place certainly is going to come from the Assessor Association. Uh, and thank you, I want to give a big shout out to Assessor Amara. She sent me a copy of, uh, the initial draft of the bill. Uh, but we're going to have a certain opportunity to read it and then now they're kind of aligning what is, what is happening. We, I don't have a copy of the latest, but, uh, certainly that's going to be a very interesting, a special session. We'll see what happens. And, and I just want to close with, with this also. The, uh, keep in mind that safe, uh, communities that care, we had a meeting as well last week. And if we, we have an opportunity to address what is happening when it comes to the opioid, with the fentanyl, with all of the deaths. Uh, if you get an opportunity to reach out to Marcy, she presented some facts. How many individuals between Norfolk County and San Francisco County, uh, through a report that is, uh, probably through CDV, available? How many of the deaths that we have, uh, witnessed due to opioids have had any type of a fentanyl laze type of thing? That report was very, uh, very interesting. And so that meeting was a really eye opening of what's happening to small communities from the opioid perspective, uh, the opioid funds who are continuing to work on promoting and providing those funds for small community services. And so it's, uh, a lot of challenges coming our way and all at the end of the day, and that will, how much money is that going to cost? That's going to be my report. Uh, and certainly welcome, uh, all of you at this point in time. The elected officials, okay, it's, uh, Assessor Amara, thank you for being here today.
Good morning, everyone. My voice, I love wealth of information and I just bring rays of sunshine everywhere I go. As Commissioner Locas, uh, has already informed the public and everyone, a special session has been called. The governor made that announcement last week. The Blue Caller Commission, Property Tax Commission, will be meeting again this Friday on August 23rd. We think it's cutting the timeline a little short, but that's, um, some rural county's opinions. As you had mentioned, there's a lot of backdoor conversations and backdoor meetings going on at this time. So the 23rd to the opening day of session on the 26th, that doesn't give anybody a lot of time to give comments, break down the bill, break down, um, possible pitfalls, what could be long-term implications to this bill. The bill that I showed you all and that I passed on is in a draft state, is being changed again as we speak. Unfortunately, they're, they're keeping this very close to the vest. There's a very small group of people that are in on the negotiations at this time. We are really seeing the divide between rural and urban again. So, um, I am raising my voice and stomping my feet, hoping to get them to understand that they are going, there's, the impacts of this bill are going to impact rural Colorado probably in the next 10 to 15 years, if not the next eight. And it could be a fiscal decrease that we're going to see because we're talking about lowering assessment rates. We're talking about decreasing, um, values. And when you do that, eventually you will see a shortfall in revenues to your special districts, to your services. And that is a guarantee because I've already been here, done that once, and I'm hoping that I can be a voice of reason to the people that are going to be signing this bill and making this bill and hope to guide them away from that, um, danger slope that they're about, they're on the edge of a cliff and they're about ready to dive off. And I'm hoping I can give them some words of wisdom because Los Angeles County has been there before. When we set our levy, when we had high value and then we were having a lot of robust economic times, we decided that we were going to lower our general operating levy. The next year we saw our value decrease in half and I'm afraid we are going to be seeing that. The market will reset itself. As assessors, we have to value properties off of market values. We are seeing this vote decline. We've seen about a two to three percent decrease from our last revale to this revale. We're still doing the, the math, um, but we are seeing the markets come down. Um, my personal opinion, we are going to see probably a significant market reset here shortly due to the fact that interest rates are high, houses are on the market a little bit longer, things aren't moving as fast as they were two years ago. The market's going to reset itself. It always does. It's a circle. We saw it in the eighties, we saw it in the nineties, we saw it in the early 2000s. We're going to see that again. In 22 years, I've been through two market read, three adjustments in my 22 years as, in the assessor topics. We will see this again. And my concern is when we see those market values come down, we legislatively set our assessment rates and our actual value reductions here. We need to have a mechanism or something to re-correct. I personally and professionally would like to see a sunset in the bill. I have reached out to my colleagues. We are having conversations as we speak. Um, some are for it, some are against it. We will see what prevails. And the whole reason that the legislature and the governor have called, um, a special session is to deliver further property tax relief for Coloradoans and avoid the impacts of the proposed initiatives, the ballot initiatives that are, possibly those might be on our November ballot. Legislative leadership at the governor's office and the initiative proponents have an agreement in place for a special session, which we know we've already called. In addition, property, if, if additional property tax relief is passed. Currently we are under Senator 24 to 33, which gives us property tax relief in '25, '26, '27, moving on forward, which is reduce assessment rates, classification changes to properties, exempt, um, valuation reductions in actual values. If we can, if the legislature and the folks that are proposing the initiatives, if they can reach an agreement, the ballot proponents will withdraw the measures from the 2024 ballot. There is a pledge to pull them and not to introduce any legislation or any ballot initiatives in the coming years. We'll see if that pledge holds water or if it's like a spaghetti stringer. That's anybody's guess at this point.
That was one of the, uh, one of the questions that was asked directly at the original deal with our CCIA. With the opponent, Mr. Fields, uh, joined the meeting and he was asked directly, will you abstain from introducing any in future years? And he said, yes, we would. I believe that, you know, we're up to date. And so certainly, uh, the, uh, the word is out there. And if there ever was a lot of push for this, I think he will get a pushback.
I think he will get pushed back, but knowing the gentleman, I, I'm still a little wary at this point in time.
Question for you. Is there any negotiations about backfilling with the government? What do you think is going around now? Because let alone, it does have backfill.
The backfill proponent is a large hangup to all of this. Uh, because the two ballot initiatives, so ballot initiative 108, the statutory initiative will reduce assessments for homeowners of business and increase overall property tax revenue by 2.4 billion statewide. Initiative 50, this is a constitutional initiative, which will limit statewide property tax revenue from increasing more than four percent from a prior year. Under this initiative, if a local district or government or local entity wants to increase by more than four, it would require a statewide vote for one local district to be had. So 108 references backfill. That has been the large issue because of budgetary concerns in the state level.
It would be good for the county.
It would be great for the county, it'd be great for fire districts, all your small districts, your ambulance district, your fire districts, our health districts, those districts that need it. Um, I don't know if that will get to the table. That is a large hiccup in this process.
And that's uncompromising. It's a large hiccup.
I keep hearing that. I have not seen it in black and whites. And unfortunately, no, none of us are going to see anything until probably Monday morning when a session gets called, since they are having a meeting Friday.
So the group recommendation is meeting this Friday?
Is meeting this Friday the topic?
Recommendations to the legislature, as everybody's kind of uncovered.
On Monday?
This other representative, uh, of course, uh, from Alamosa, Gloria asking, uh, which are, or is he what exactly? So if you are, some of the talking points, let's go ahead and reach out to her as she prepares to begin the meeting because I can assure you that this is, uh, surprising to them. And some of them are hearing from the one assessors and counties, the more we can come together and settle information or achieve as more credibility and can advance that pledge.
And yes, and I, um, I am blessed because we do have an assessor who's a wonderful colleague of mine who is on this commission. We are, she is being guarded from all sides. Um, she, unfortunately, she's just one voice at the table. But we are hoping that we can get some common sense put into this bill because we have seen in the last three years, bill after bill after bill, that assessors must implement. And we are too good at our jobs because we will break our backs and our necks to get this done. But I am concerned at the long-term impacts, the unintended consequences that this bill is going to leave for those that come behind us in the next eight, 10, 15 years financially.
One of my primary concerns with this whole process is it's bad governance. When you talk to a ordinary, just a regular individual, threaten the brand ballot initiative forward and then negotiate with the governor after session is ended, that is bad governance. Because I'm afraid it's going to set precedence and every time there's an outcome that somebody doesn't like, whether it be a wolf or the risk of very later or whatever, then they can do this.
Commissioner Mas, I agree 100% and we've already set precedence. When Proposition HH failed on the ballot initiative, a special session was called at the end of last year to perform exactly what you're speaking of. So we've already set the precedence. We're just here again. It's same song and dance, just on a different day.
Mr. Amaro, um, you know, the Assessor Association and CCI and all the organizations that make deep contribution of the session. Um, do we have any other elected official associations, the clerks, treasurers, or attorneys involved in any of this or putting their input? Because this ultimately affects their budget and it could come back to us with a negative impact.
I have not heard from the clerks. Um, I think the treasurers are keeping their finger on the pulse of it, but I don't believe they are in the thick of it. I can tell you special small district association, SDA is in it. Um, I have heard that some fire districts, they're starting to pay attention. And I don't want to be the Jew and glue, but I have, I hope to express my concerns and the knowledge that I have through the experience of having limited resources at a local level to hope, guide them to not make the same mistakes. If they can learn from our mistakes, then we've done our jobs and we've saved somebody else's small district, somebody else's county, some, some other public provider from going, from not being able to provide services to their constituents.
Thank you for your service, Sister to you and the committee and the other committee.
Not a problem. On a side note, is there any way we can get word out about our handicap parking? The last two weeks I have had multiple people stop at my office. And I know lots because this report is starting to change down here. So I have a lot of folks that are shopping at my information booth, if you will, um, needing to know where they can park handicap. They, I've explained to them that it is not the county's issue, it was a city issue due to no longer having handicap parking in the front. But if we can do some public outreach or something, because they are having a hard time walking from this side of the building all the way up in the end, I'd appreciate it.
Do we have, uh, the, this one? Is there a fear that the parking is on first street? I'm not sure.
Yeah, they're, well, they're not aware. Most of them are parking.
Well, that, let's put it on the, on the way, um, and on the same kind of, uh, with the assessor, uh, uh, Assessor Amaro and I had a conversation as well, uh, as I attended this NAPO conference about Hyder's responsibility on the software side of the house. In preparation for what could be the many calculations, one of the national representatives was able to, uh, reach out to San Francisco County and so certainly the conversation is ongoing to plan.
About the price?
No, actually this is.
Currently it will not, but I can tell you, we had a conversation yesterday. I think we're going to see all software members are going to increase due to the fact that we continue to have special session after special session. We used to be a very predictable timeline and calendar legislatively, but now we are changing the way we do business.
Change, it's changing, yeah.
And so there, uh, the cost of business will be going up eventually. Currently in our contracts, if we have legislative change, they have to pick it up. But they also have to cover their bills, so we will see fees or something somewhere else.
We, we appreciate the graciousness from either.
Yes.
Who sent us a national representative from this begin? Because we know that if the San Francisco County is looking at this software upgrades, then we can look at going to the same.
Yes.
So, sir, should I make, this is, uh, a couple of, uh, right, back to the other class. It's, it's just from all about maybe parking, I do want to make a comment, the county did seek funds to move vampires to our 40 yard parking lot that they included. And there's three, they may need parking spaces and we were told for a later competition, it was a, to refund. That's a statement. So we're kicking around, so you got to.
Thank you.
We are looking a lot of research, there are actually, there's a couple of, uh, more parking facilities to the south of Corrales, but that's to be determined, and I would like for also listening of it. Very good. Thank you.
Well, I will keep you all informed as the world turns in my little world. And I will be spending, I have a feeling I'll be glued to my computer and my cell phone the entire weekend. But I will keep you informed as information is coming out of my phone.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, can we just play one of the, use, use actual, well, the cell phone, uh, right? You'd be, I'd order you to, to explain where the, uh, as.
It's not a small, uh, uh, where it did that because.
We'll, should I just recall that?
Yes. Uh, thank you, Mr. Amaro. Let me, uh, now call many other elected officials that may be present. Anyone from the clerk and reporter's office? Anyone from the treasurer's, sheriff's office? District attorney? And for order, you're in hand, we're going to go to the next, uh, session. Uh, we have, uh, comments, comments. Let me go, Margie Ferrandelli, please come up, uh, for reality. You'll have three minutes to provide us with information on some exciting things that I believe are happening in our community and our local communities.
Thank you, commissioners and staff. Um, Margie Ferrandelli, History Colorado. Um, I just wanted to share a couple of things coming down the pipe for government policy. Um, History Colorado, government policy has tasked History Colorado to consider a Hispanic, Latino, Chicano museum, often La Roria campus up in Denver. Um, so what they've done is they've hired one facility or to go to 14 different communities within Colorado to get local and regional input. And so I wanted to share that our specific time is September 10th at the Commons from 5:30 to 7:30. Um, you don't have to be Hispanic to be there. Anybody has an input, we'd love to have you there. So that was number one. Number two is, as you all know, 2026 is our. Number two is, as you all know, 2026 is our 250-150 celebration for Colorado and the United States, but also an extra 150 for Trinidad. So again, um, we are starting to cast our net for different organizations and people who might be interested in bringing some of the benefits that we're putting out as far as logos, patents. So basically, um, October 17th from 3 to 5 at the Blue Mansion, we are going to have our first meeting, um, trying to get some people to form a committee for our county, for our town, um, and kind of again pass that white that seems interested, what we can do. And basically, what are the organizations already doing, already have in place that we can just help bolster up and make more exciting and possibly throw some money at them to make it happen? So that's all I have to say. If you have any questions, feel free to reach me, I'll leave suppliers, there's also some, um, links there that you can RSVP and buy. That's more information. Thank you for your time.
And committee, you apparently don't engage, but I want to say thanks for coming. I need to, Margie, as you can ask, remember you did this commission and you have to come.
Yep.
So thank you for coming.
Thanks for the invitation.
Thank you.
Where should I put some of these?
Right here. All of them. We are now going to jump all the way to section nine, new business. Mind the consideration of 24 dash A, RFQ, B1, air force, airport, civic system, designated design and installation oversight, Mr. Gordon.
Commissioners, do you have some discussion on the professional? Issue RFQ and received two responses. Call that RFQ to design a civic system, airport facility. The current arrangement of civic, uh, taking care of the medical spread is antiquated, so I'm wondering, matter of fact, there are no, uh, designing documents anywhere that anyone can find. All the part of the civic, the civic materials are over there, over here. They don't send us kinds of archives to show how that system is designed and where it actually is located. We have a civic tank as far as a cage filter section, and a lot that we have up there. So that means services by RFQ is necessary. Uh, we interviewed both the CEO of DC, the three rocks, two respondents. Come to the chase, we recommend the board of RFQ to see the DC. Here, neither firm did a good job for us, we both experienced in designing commercial civic systems or on-site, a lot of trips, it was not helping, the firm just did a lot, really well, did a good job. Since the CEO of DC was a good, the first speed was a good, go to the three rocks, and I found some of the, uh, recommendations. We budgeted $50,000 for a turnkey project. Me and me, they were often want, and residential civic systems were costing, but after speaking with both of these partners, there is a huge difference in commercial. We're going to be able to 50,000, I don't know if it's a big usage, it's a huge difference in commercial and residential. So 50,000, we did us those design, uh, this one, I mean, a pretty huge way for us to move the civic system. Probably hundreds of thousands of resources. We're going to do that, so basically, I would wish to offer a tentative study on these institutions.
Okay, now we're already considering, we have assigned about $8,340, and they're asking, looking back, for the, uh, the actual cost for the installation.
I'm going to bring the contract to the board, and then the board sign off on the contract. This is a further second goal, we're going to say, yes, we're not going to cost it. So is the old system of the, uh, passing the unit fee to firms excavating or having it placed? We'll be at that point, because our provision of cost for the services. And what they did, technically, was just-
For a question, um, sure, and, uh, so CEO of DC will work with the health department, um, for all state statute requirements at that time, whether it was a bit-
Yes.
As a board member, I know that tends to be a hit up for some, especially for residents. The rising expense sometimes can be quite expensive, especially with engineering and soil infection purchase.
Does anyone have any additional questions on that project? You're in line, how would I think, motion? Motion to approve, CEO of DC consultant, for 5,000,000 dollars.
Second motion.
Push, yes, push, please, yes, push, please. Yes, uh, thank you for all that, uh, keep us posted as to the second phase of a project that we will be here of. I have to move on to, uh, nine D, consideration of serving as the lead agency for an infrastructure investment in jobs act of inner state, United States, wildlife, fencing, grant application, Mr. Gordon.
Commissioner, the Department of Transportation has telling to me, we have a good one, to direct the license fencing on that. Pretty close to that, so it's, Commissioner, send me the, 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 that's what's-
By the way, Commissioner has asked me, what was his, uh, cable, it's asking, uh, you know. And so certainly, we, uh, thank Commissioner for that, we know that we're going to be with them. At the proposed site, and from what we saw, there is, uh, a small creek that goes by, and so certainly they, uh, this company may mention that there's going to be any interruption to that creek. And the location where, uh, from east to west, Commissioner has a lot of questions, because he knows the property that we're designing. So I think if when we walk the way we felt comfortable, there would be a good proposed location, so we can that back. I think it would be, uh, uh, my, my recommendation personally would be to support this.
Chairman from the area, I'd like to thank, uh, Bob Frye, who's our planning environmental manager for reaching two, bringing this forward to us. Uh, myself, Bush, Bush, with the country's language, a moment ago. Um, right, and a stage of this, and thank for the site visit, for the board as well. Uh, I did have a conversation with Frye regarding, uh, the administration of the grant. And even more, I feel comfortable with the results of that, uh, just to quote the advanced director as concerns. And I believe that conversation has been had and been resolved. So there go ahead, a further question, do you have more at this time? And how do you, how do you also second to the motion, uh, that you want, Commissioner, as?
Yeah, one of my primary concerns, it wasn't that in a, a burden on the ranch or on the west side of the highway. And it wasn't a government, it handles right along the road, right, because I can step in and ask also. So, uh, we're sure to be, they had a very conversation with that lady. And, uh, he was, he was okay with it, as long as it ended in a church on this property. And, uh, they're going to have to do a survey, and we're going to help out, certainly, but there isn't a string there. But between the road and the highway, and, uh, anyway, they can't be, uh, so the commission can also. So, yeah, I would like to make a motion to, uh, approve several things of the agency for a new infrastructure investment in jobs act by 25,000,000. Wildlife, that's a bad.
Second motion. Commissioner, please, yes, yes.
Commissioner Peterson.
Yes, uh, this is going to be a tight project. Uh, nine D, consideration of board, hope, service engagement, and be a great, Mr. Gordon. I'm going to refer to 23, those, alright.
Commissioner, this is to engage, um, fully and hope to assist us in the negotiation process for the, you know, the, the-
Thank you, uh, and I know the conversation on this, so commissioners, any additional questions on this? So they want, so I'm going to get the question.
Motion to approve, fully hope service engagement, Peter.
Second motion.
Push, yes, yes, should we still press?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, uh, nine D, consideration, remember we're hiring hours of operations, Mr. Gordon. Before you create consideration, I mean, commissioners, it's, it's your right to say. I remember we're regarding the hours of operation, kind of a, a line to calculate the certain officials. I think it's essential, laws, powers of operation, how they're approached, how it's always on. I think, I think we want to, the citizens who are served, that they can expect, when they come to the court house, that all our offices are open, and the services have certain values, you know. Next, remember, the cave, hodgepodge, who's closing, where, where? If I come here from outside, from outside, the signature is, under the services, the court house is open, the office is closed. I'm going to be a real star.
Thank you, just, for the regular, I think you agree that, I think it would be good for the, uh, the audience.
Remember, to Los Angeles County, the officials department employees, seven hours of operation for offices and departments. They don't go for 20, come away from the small random services reminder. The bulk of our services for the citizen of Los Angeles County, they should explain the system and accessibility to the services. Thirty hours of operation continued by the board, resolution 24, after 27, creating common files and creating establishes. These hours will be 20, 24, and be made before they're repeated. 23, 30, agitated, after 1:09, creating common files. Line to publicates that the board and establishes office hours are clarified, that all timing offices shall be kept open. Very such, and very understanding cooperation, color by decision.
Thank you, uh, Gordon, any questions, they have this whole conversation, any commissioners?
You know, for those requests, let out the jet, for example, drive seven two miles even further, or clear down by, or delivering, number two, nine. Drive all the way into due business here in Los Angeles County, and then totally find out that that office is closed. Yeah, maybe a lot too, so I would like to approve the memo regarding hours of operation. Is that enough?
Should we still press? Yes, should I ask? Yes. Should we still press?
Yes. Thank you. Uh, remember, uh, I have ninety. Consideration of ninety. Consideration of technical jet FBO disagree. I, uh, I would be personally, I think we need to, uh, I'm going to make a recommendation. Take this shortly for an executive session, whether we do it now, or we do it at the end. And then make a decision, I think I'd like to, uh, counsel, if it's okay with you, I'd like to, uh, call this. For a couple of clarification questions on my end, Commissioner. If you are agreeing with that, I would make the motion that we, uh, put it out. And then motion to adjourn to the technical session, or if, um, do we need to step, uh, which will be, your name is not going to be on there. Can I take a minute specifically to make a motion to adjourn to the session?
Second motion, Mr. President. Yes. Should we still press? Yes. Should we still press? Yes. We'll be back soon.
Recording stopped.
All right. That we got?
Okay.
All right. I'm doing good. All right. Thank you. All right.
What was on our goal, huh?
Well, it was.
Kita. I don't, I don't think it's actually an issue, it was just included as a protective clause or there, so. But I don't know where it is actually from. Hey, this is your office, is that open? Do you have any closer?
No, the guys are working in there, thank you, yeah.
Recording in progress.
Thank you, Commissioner. At this time, I'm interrupting a motion to raise it from executive session. And we enter into the break of work, Commissioner, as we.
Second motion, should we still press?
Yes.
Should I ask?
Yes.
Should we still?
Yes, uh, and thank you, uh, those of you on nine and those of you here present, thank you for, uh, your graciousness. Audience, to give an opportunity to, uh, one by united clarification, so having said that, I'm going to yield the floor to, uh, my Commissioner. Well, Commissioner, please let us.
That's true, thank you, and, um, Mr. Gordon Camp and I were able to visit him briefly with Mr. Otto. Uh, regarding the county's concerns and change in, um, Omen, um, under seven C, sentence, uh, line number two. Uh, the, the, the words will be moved are, or will ensure they are moved from any required use. Please see assuming use. And Mr. Otto agreed to that, basically, uh, in layman's terms, he's a very responsible prosecutor. Any, uh, past tenants that currently have been ejected, missed, or missed, or missed, and, uh, to her knowledge, um, was unaware of any, uh, releases that are in the deadly gun industry. So with that said, we can move forward with this, um, and I make the motion to approve the consideration of technical jet FBO released at that mission.
Second motion, should I ask?
Yes.
Should we still press?
Yes.
Should we still?
Yes. Uh, thank you so much, uh, we look forward to, uh, working with you and for the, uh, successes on the episode here in Los Angeles County. Thank you, uh, and this is going to be a fantastic cooperating partnership between the county and the area. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for all your help in Los Angeles County, and moving forward, I look forward to seeing that, that beautiful building come back to life and lots of air traffic. And people really really will consider, so thank you for that.
We're going out to, uh, nine D, consideration of diesel fuel paid by Mr. Gordon Camp.
Mr. Gordon, three fifty considerations, diesel fuel paid. For, like, safety, and, uh, damage, used to be delivered to my fairgrounds, so far, following results. Oilfield two point five two thousand nine dollars per gallon, standard price eighteen thousand, or seventy three thousand eighty two cents. High value oil, two point four nine dollars per gallon, standard price seventeen thousand one hundred twenty eight dollars. Acon petroleum, two point sixteen dollars per gallon, standard price eighteen thousand. Eight hundred sixty four dollars a ounce, and we're going to approve nine dollars. Oil's given two point four nine dollars per gallon, standard price seventeen thousand nine hundred twenty eight dollars.
Thank you, sir, Commissioner, and any discussion on this? I'm interrupting a motion. Move to approve the diesel fuel paid, two point five, about two dollars, four nine cents, and, uh, twelve, seventeen thousand nine hundred twenty eight dollars.
Second motion, should we still press?
Yes.
Should I ask?
Yes.
Should we still?
Yes, uh, thank you, and thank you for bringing all this. It's, uh, nine G consideration of the official proclamation, mining and safety, as part of the report, not in case admission, as per. Four three consideration, Commissioner, this is making, uh, this is making, uh, insurance, honestly. One of this, excuse me, actually this, three seven hundred dollars, it's, not well. Senior procedures, like you know, this, uh, numbers. Thank you, Mr. Gordon Camp, Commissioners, any other discussion? Here we are, I'm interrupting a motion. Motion to approve the original agreement, mine and safety, five to ten, and a quarter, and a half, and a six. Second motion.
Should I ask? Yes. Should we still press?
Yes.
Should we still?
Yes, nine eight consideration of the official proclamation, mining and safety, part of the date, kind of report, not in case admission, back in, uh.
Same scenario, this is probably.
Sir, same question, Commissioners, any question, discussion? Here we are, I'm interrupting a motion.
Reclamation, I'm serious, already, that's never reported, and, excuse me.
Second motion, should we still press?
Yes.
Should I ask?
Yes.
Should we still?
Yes. Thank you, uh, nine and I, consideration of official reclamation, mining and safety, China, we. And of the board matter, this admission, and back in the board, students, priority, officials, services, or shown. Thank you, sir. Same question, Commissioners, and the discussion of what is all kind of a motion? The motion to, because we're having a minor safety chance, and then we're reporting that in this submission.
Second motion, should I ask? Yes. Should we still?
Yes.
Should we still?
Yes, uh, thank you, uh, nine J consideration of resolution twenty-four dash zero three, are the sensitive area firearms, and, out, out, Mr. Gordon Camp.
We can share this consideration. Um, resolution twenty-four, certainly, certainly, very, firearms, and, out.
Sir, I would give you, uh, any additional questions, discussion of the ones in the last week, the board camp, the resolution.
Resolution, board camp, Commissioner, Los Angeles County, checking the right to carry, and sensitive spaces, according to Colorado, sent over twenty-four, nine, one, two, one. Resolution number twenty-four, nine, zero, three. Whereas, as soon as CRX thirty, eleven, one, zero, three, thirty, eleven, nine, zero, seven. When one, and they receive and repeat, the board, county officials, and state officials, Colorado, and here and after, we go. As an express for to manage the business, the company, and serve the county, sure, and well for agents of the county, that's a help, that's a good. Before you enter such negotiations, important, for taking the problem, and helping to, and care of the county, and. Whereas, county, and state, and Colorado, as the board, for such CRX thirty, eleven, one, zero, three, three, two, one. Two thousand, plus one, this is resolution, for, well, safety, and health issues. Member has an eight nine, four, two, four, twelve, and destination. Two of the dollars, single, twelve, four, one, three, one. We are here to fire on sensitive spaces, and, uh, times, and United States, square, and expenses, and which, all, sending laws, we are here to carry firearms. Whereas, seven, one, four, one, three, one, service, between, twelve, one, zero, five, one, three, for this person, for. And only carry the firearm, and, uh, on, and, 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 adjacent, part areas, the chambers, and, uh, the local government, it's never, and, and. While also, we are the person to carry firearms, to, and even, the local government, government, so, uh, the law, is looking up. Or, the official, office, and, uh, the, the, county. And that's what we're about, the government, district, subsegment, four, B, CRX, two, twelve, one, zero, five, one, three. And whereas, instead of twelve, four, one, three, one, expressing, we, 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 it's a local government, to, uh, the, it's. Relation, third law, and we're, it's a character, person, carry firearms, and, uh, the, places, describing, service, and, uh, twelve, one, zero, five, one, three. On the B, and whereas, the state, and, uh, county. Local government, like, services, state, and, uh, which has, is, so, this resolution, excuse me. To extend its constitution, regulation, for, meaning, seven, twelve, four, one, three, one. And then, versus, otherwise, we're here at the moment, carry firearms, and carry, so, far as. We're, we're, probably, referring, the local, distance, service, that, uh, twelve, one, four, one, three, B, one, dash, freedom. Including places on Los Angeles County, and whereas, this resolution, should satisfy all the colleges, as you continue. And, uh, all, as a county, trying, by, regulation, and whereas, carry firearms, on Los Angeles County. Courts, may be of a building, proportion of the building, dues, and proceeds, that the part of, in the service, uh. department, and the health department, the amazing, they, except for law enforcement, superior, so, for, courthouse, where the news, for court seats, the department, the service department, and the health department, so, to be, to, one, one, three, two, eight, E, whereas, is intended for, to serve, other services, of all, carry firearms, in connection with the southern, the, the forces, in, on, the law. Now, therefore, we exact, the self, the work characters, in San Luis County, along the law possession, we conceal, the firearms, including, one, two, one, those who use part of the, the, courthouse, only of the building, proportion of the building used, court seats, adjacent partners, and post, location, wherein, alleged, second, laws, or issue, cash, account, and, by the, the service, and, and, other, this resolution shall, perfected, on, and, 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 motion, with the second, for the book, this resolution was, adopted, on, twenty, the, the, bars, twenty, four, issues, in my, this, the date, that should be, August, twenty, twenty four, excuse me, this, um...
Let's just slide, as long as...
Okay. Yeah. I need to prove you that I took... Just one.
Just to comment, the, uh, Royal Health, the, the, run end, by, the health director, and, and, members of the Royal Health, and, and, that would be good, of, one, really, especially since the threats that happened, and, and, so, thank you, the board, and, and, for, for, including, that, incident. With that said, make the motion to approve, resolution twenty four, as you will feel, sensitive area of our grounds, that, perfected, today's date, on, twenty, three, one. Before I prove that, we had a specific conversation with the sheriff, with the, uh, the sheriff's actually, red floor line, and I wondered, because we cannot have the, uh, the manpower to manage, for instance, the town, and, 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 second motion.
Monsieur Haskins, yes. Monsieur Bruce, please. Yes. Monsieur Bruce.
Yes. Thank you, uh, nine J, uh, nine K, consideration of retail labor license, the little enterprise is being, 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 posed, uh, and, and, I think, the special, was to, uh...
Have reviewed the application, it's complete.
Thank you. Commissioners, any additional questions on that? Do we not have a different motion? To approve retail license, the little enterprise, is it, any, any, specific... Second motion.
Monsieur Bruce, please. Yes. Monsieur Haskins, yes. Monsieur Bruce.
Yes, uh, thank you, uh, and, uh, nine L, consideration of fairgrounds policy modification,
actually, before you, there's a request to modify our fairgrounds policy, by removing vendor booth, a desk, vendor sales, search charges, but, uh, fairgrounds, well, they were, as, stated, that there's, there are a lot of opposition for, for different organizations, because they feel, perhaps, major, for, for, fairgrounds, just, maybe, sales, pictures, etc., etc., to, to, uh, sell a product, in, in, kind of, case of, of...
Monsieur, no, no, no. Monsieur Bruce, so, I think, that's what I see, and, 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 has it, been, been the facility, because, and, why should we, or, or, and, and, so, and, 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 bringing that discussions, on the promise, to eliminate those, these search charges, keep the ticket search up, so, because, as, a lot of pushback, and that, perhaps, perhaps we look at, maybe, in the near future, adjusting the minimum rates, and, in other way, person wants to set up, or wants to set up a fairgrounds, and sell a product, to sell, in a way, and increase the minimum rate, and, and, to prove some of the search charge, and, and, that, and, also, it's, it's, at least, it's possible, because we are an employee, on each one of those vendors, who are selling, in, in, kind of, their facility, like, to actually, get a firm, a, a press, and, exactly, what they own, so, it's always been, of, of, of...
Well, thank you, sir, and I, I think, I agree, certainly, there's a lot of, uh, work, in, at the art, for, the person that's actually, basically, that, and, thank you for thinking that, to us, but, it, it really makes sense, we talked about it, and, of course, we believe that's, the right, uh, the right of the, commissioners. I, for me, I got a little marker of this, of all complaints that, uh, the corporate brands receiving, because, uh, every time, if we make an improvement, that, their costs account, we know, and, we'd like to recoup some of those costs, for instance, the air conditioner, that everybody's enjoyed immensely, uh, I actually got a complaint, that it's too cold, can we turn it down, I said, hell, no, we're not doing it, but, uh, that was in a, figure, in, 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 for me, so, I got a little marker of that, but, I, I understand the level that you put you in, but, uh, I think the public should understand that, you know, we're just trying to recoup some of those costs. I couldn't agree more, um, Monsieur. I would make a recommendation, move forward with these renovations, however, um, move forward as well, the, the administration, the staff, reevaluate, um, some of the lower fees that are being used at this time, such as the, smart, D, area, area, D, area, A, and, possibly, um, the D, I'm sorry, the indoor, area, D, and C, um, less than five dollars, which, maybe, the hour, maybe, to offset some of those losses, especially for larger density of the economy, such as the, um, NODO, dentary, for later, for next year, that we can incorporate definitely this year, uh, but I do agree that it is a congressman for, um, this moment, to have to track down all of this, and it doesn't, it doesn't possibly, uh, persuade folks, we're not using the fairgrounds, and that's what we want, is using more, so, you know, what's the percentage, we're going to use that evaluation, based on the income that you receive over the past two years, I think we've implemented this, and that would be the way to, kind of, uh, project the increase, uh, based on those revenues that would be, you know, regenerated, and incorporate that into the new fee structure, uh, side of these, and, and I would be fine with that. I know, we can't ask for a Tottenham hallway, when we're in the motel system, but, as we get to the Tottenham hall, eventually, with the renovations coming to the fairgrounds, um, for commissioners in the future, uh, it is especially weird, when that comes to the commission, um, that we incorporate increases with renovations, and, and all the beautification of the, the service, and, and, so, with that section, I will have an issue for the board, and we make the motion to, uh, approve the, uh, fairgrounds policy modifications.
Second motion. Monsieur Haskins, yes. Monsieur Bruce, please. Yes. Monsieur Bruce.
Yes, thank you, uh, for, uh, for this, to us, section ten, financial action, consideration of table of bills, for the first half of August, two thousand twenty four. Would be, uh, straightforward, and, uh, your questions, I would have, uh, please, etc., if there are any questions, and, uh, please, there are...
You, uh, one of the, uh, one of the staple just highlights, and answered the questions, but, uh, the, uh, new, it's, this is, uh, new tires for maintenance, low orbit vehicles, ninety seven thousand, I think, uh...
No, sir, I see, we, we, those, uh, vehicles, you are, those are making spring, twenty twenty two?
Okay, you said, with everybody, so, not bad. So, if there's a number of hours, you give it to them, like, in, in, six?
Yes.
If we're still waiting on the section office, man, or...
That's not more of the, 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 the...
That's all that's good for...
I've heard them, in, September, we, September, sixth, the final, the...
I'm glad you brought to that what you did, because, two trucks without a mount, you couldn't do that today.
True. Well, thank you, uh, any other questions on the financials? Any, uh, any highlights?
I just want to note that the due to South Central Council, the, the, thirteen thousand, was recently paid, and the reason why it wasn't paid, was recently here, um, I talked to the director of Blassey, that he did not submit that request until recently, so, I would like to say, now, we'll, we'll, second...
Given all the questions, I'll entertain a motion, uh, through the financials, we get, we, 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 first half of August, two thousand, two thousand, seven, motion.
Monsieur Bruce, please. Yes. Monsieur Haskins, yes. Monsieur Bruce.
Yes, uh, number six, the section, the gentleman, executive session, the board will be in executive session, under CRX, one, two, four, two, for B, and for the county attorney, for the purposes of civil legal advice, and specific legal questions, and a made contract, B, courthouse, place, three, commissioners, I'll entertain a motion to, going to executive session, wait for small pieces, so, second motion.
Monsieur Haskins, yes. Monsieur Bruce, please. Yes. Monsieur Bruce.
Yes. Thank you all.